Good luck on October number nine and welcome to our October meeting. Glad to have so many people here. A full council. Nice job, Mr. Ait. We have a couple of very interesting special presentations before we get down to business, but I'm counting here. We have ten pieces of old business and four pieces of new business. So we've got quite an agenda tonight, so stick around. We'll have a great time. And as we do, we'll start out the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, I believe for the first time, we have a somebody new is going to open us up with a prayer, Rob Greependragh. And he is from the Onsite International Prayer. Is that right? So after we say the pledge, if you would come forward, but before you pray, tell us a little bit about your organization. Would you do that? Very good. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening tonight. I thank you for the privilege to continue to pray before these meetings. Onsite International is a ministry that's about six years old and it's formed to encourage Christians to carry prayer everywhere. Carry prayer everywhere in a community, in the nation, and throughout the world. And so without further ado, let's pray. Sovereign Lord, you made the heavens and the earth and the sea and everything in them. I love, bless, and honor you tonight in this place. Send your Holy Spirit to guide us this evening. In each discussion, deliberation, decision, and more, direct every word for your glory. Lastly, may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be or become pleasing in your sight, Lord, our rock and our redeemer. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. President Ait, it's all yours.
Can you discuss and please go.
Here.
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 Thank you so much. There are no changes to the agenda tonight, and so we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the City Council Meeting of September 25th. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion by Joe Edwards. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover. Is there any discussion? Any notice of any changes or corrections? Hearing none. Signify by saying aye if you move to approve the minutes as stated.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the minutes are approved, seven zero. Moving on to claims. Got a chance to review those. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve claims.
All right. I have a motion by Markeen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe Edwards. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for approval of the minutes by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries, seven zero. Tonight, we're fortunate to have two special presentations. I'd like to invite the Westfield High School, Westfield Environmental Club, the Green Campaign. We'd like to hear more about that. So please come forward. Natasha?
Yes. It is a pleasure to be here and to be able to join you guys and tell you a little bit about what the students are doing. Where is my mouse? Thank you. So we are just, they decided to call themselves Shamrock Green. The kids aren't here tonight because almost all of them are in band, so they're at band practice. So they put this together to share with you on some of the things that they are doing. These are students who have taken environmental science, the core group we have, and so they're interested in what are ways that we can implement these ideas in our community and in a way that is accessible to people in the community and not discouraging people and not making people feel like they're being forced into something. So one of the things that they were really interested in were, was using T-shirt bags to encourage reduction of single-use plastics. They got excited this year about a marker recycling program through Crayola, and then they started a locker clean-out recycling program. So the first program, the T-shirt bag program, they're just, it's simple, no-so, and they've done a few tutorials with different groups. And it's just cutting these bits and then tying it, and it can be old T-shirts that people don't want anymore. So they're just looking for places to do this with different groups of people. And they wanted to take a break, so they wanted to focus on the other things. There's about eight students involved right now. Marker recycling with Crayola Color Cycle. If people are here from other schools, please feel free to contact me. It can be set up in different schools, and it's just all markers can be brought in, and people from the community, we're happy to take those as well. We send them to Crayola, and they deal with getting them recycled instead of going just into the trash system. And their locker clean-out, they saved fifteen pounds from the trash last year, and they're looking at ways to encourage students. They're going to have bags and boxes so that papers can go into that instead of in the trash like they do this year. So they're really interested in being involved with the community and are directly linked with, working with the Westfield Green Initiative Group, so.
Yeah. So I'm Sarah Gillum, and I started this little community group called Westfield Green Together, and the goal of it is to just learn about, educate, and advocate for sustainable living. And, there we go. We have a Facebook group page, if you're interested in that, that just kind of lets people know what's going on. We started, well, this year around January, and we've done several different activities, and I invite people to see what's going on on the Facebook group page and to get involved. I'm always up for new ideas. So these are some of the things we've done, and I know we're short on time, so I'm not going to really discuss a lot of them, but we've been doing a lot with Westfield Public Library. We have collaborated with the high school environmental club. We try to do things together when we can and maybe get the grown-ups involved too, or younger kids involved with some things. So there's been quite a few events that we've done. That's a list of that, it's just pictures of people doing stuff. So an upcoming thing, and I think the council's actually going to hear about this, we're going to provide some feedback to the Lego League students that are doing a project at the library, and we're going to give them some feedback, and then I think they're going to present here at the council, so you'll get to hear about them. And then we have some ideas for upcoming events, but I'm always open to new events, so I just wanted to let people know about this group if you're interested. And we would be happy to work with Westfield to try to put some things together to educate and to learn about sustainable living and environmental issues. So that's all I have. I'm exiled, you hope to escape.
So your bag initiative that you have, is that meant to like replace plastic bags?
Yeah, so encouraging use of bags that aren't, that are plastic and in a way that we don't run into any conflict, going at it more from an educational standpoint. We're also interested in approaching Kroger and other stores and put signs up, you know, when you go to get your car, and if you hide your bags, we usually leave them in our car, I know I do, and then you're like, oh, gosh darn. So to put up signs and say, just simply say, "Don't forget your bags," or.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, just at the spot.
Well, I appreciate that, because in the spring especially, we have bags flying from our trees and everything else. We'd actually talked a couple of years ago about just greatly discouraging or even banning plastic bags, but before we could get too far with that, our state said, no, 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 locals, you can't go there. So thank you for your efforts. I think it's fantastic.
You know, positive to just by saying, hey, we get these options, and we all have so many T-shirts from so many events, but making it a simple way to do it is our goal.
Thank you.
It's our goal, so.
Well, thank you, Natasha and Sarah. We appreciate that. We also have another special presentation tonight, Girls on the Run and a proclamation. Ms. Angie Smitherman.
Good evening, members. My name is Angie Smitherman. I'm president of the board for Girls on the Run Central Indiana. We want to thank you for allowing us to come and brighten up your front pew tonight. We have our executive, Lori, you don't have to get up, no, don't worry about it, our executive director and some coaches and one of our girls. We have an Oak Trace team this session, but they actually met tonight, so they're probably off resting and having dinner. One of our girls who came tonight is going to a volleyball game after, so we have very active girls. Our reason for coming, we want to raise awareness about Girls on the Run. Although the name suggests otherwise, we are not a running program, and I think that's a big misconception to everyone on the outside. They think that the girls have to be a runner in order to participate, but really, we just use running as a tool to teach girls life lessons. It helps them learn about respect, self-respect, respect for others, learns how, teaches them how to deal with bullying before they get into their teenage years and have to deal with all of those things. We feel that it's very important to help them learn how to cope with it before it happens, rather than them have to deal with it after something happens when they're in their teenage years. So we have since 2014 served around 224 girls in Westfield alone. This year, we are serving 295 girls across eight counties. We started just as Girls on the Run Hamilton County, but now we have spread out across central Indiana. Our girls do every session, they will do a community project, so maybe I should hook up with the Green Initiative over here, and we can give the girls something to do with that team, because we truly like their spirit. Other than that, we just really want to raise awareness, and we're hoping to get back into more schools in Westfield, not just the other counties that we are serving. As I mentioned earlier, we are in Oak Trace right now. We have served in six other schools within Westfield over the last few years, and we would hope to get back into those schools. Again, most people think it's a running program, but it's not, so it kind of competes with other sporting events that happens at each school. So that's it. Unless you have any questions.
I have a proclamation.
Oh. We're going to try and get the mayor to run with us.
Before we start, why don't you tell him about my bumper sticker.
His bumper sticker says, "Zero point zero, I cannot run." I don't like to run. But.
Oh, no. We're going to have.
But I brought you a shirt. It says, "Girls on the Run."
How bad? Are you British?
Mayor, what did you do?
Are you listening to your mom? Why are you here? Angela Smitherman, affectionately known as Smithers, has been with us several years. She was at Public Works, and now she's out at Grand Heart assisting Wigginox in that endeavor, but she has been one of those very special employees. If you follow her on FaceTime like I do, it's every weekend, she's somewhere in the world, running through woods barefoot, and I mean, all kinds of, every weekend, you're somewhere, and you have all these girls that you put together, and it's just, as she says, must be a lot more money. She's just so difficult to employ as a guest. I'm very proud of you. I was trying to pick, you say that because you know how to kill my runner. I interviewed our runners earlier, and I found out that four of the five have suffered injuries from running, which is why I keep telling them this is not a healthy thing to do. You do it well. So you're serving over 295 girls in eight counties out of this, is it a nation month or international? Okay. And you've got Shamrock, Oak Trace, Washington, Maple, Grand, Monon, Westfield, intermediate. So allow me to proclaim the month of October, the mayor's Girls on the Run Appreciation Month. I encourage all of our citizens to learn more about what this organization does and the impact it's having on our young women and children. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the special presentation, Angie. Good luck. Moving on to Old Business, first item is ordinance seventeen dash nineteen, Spring Mill Grand Station, PUD District. Ms. Pam Howard.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, President, members of the council. Before you this evening for adoption consideration, I have a change of zoning request for a planned unit development district to be known as Spring Mill Grand Station to allow for commercial development. This four-point-nine acre site is located on Spring Mill Road, just north of 161st Street, and is currently zoned SF2. The proposed ordinance adds self-storage facility as a permitted use and also includes standards for development as shown in the character exhibit and concept plan. The developer has met with the Spring Mill Station Task Group throughout the process, and a letter of support has been included and is attached to the department report. This did receive a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission's October 2nd meeting. Since the recommendation, the petitioner has made one change. They have added some additional language to the sign lighting standards, as shown in the redline version of the ordinance attached to the exhibit, and I believe you have a handout as well. I do have Eric Dowthitt here with Church Churchill and Antrim, who's going to make a brief presentation, after which both he and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Dowthitt from Church Churchill and Antrim, two North Ninth Street, Noblesville, Indiana. We are here today on something that was initially introduced to you on July 11th, 2017. There have been some significant changes since that date, and I'm just going to highlight those, especially in light of where we are in today's meeting. I'm also going to then have John Prine, the developer, here for any additional questions that you may have. We have significantly shrunk the amount of the footprint of the site plan per the request of the task group. That has led us to have this particular site plan you see here. On the west side, we now have about 120 feet of buffering to the west. We have significant trees and buffering to the north and south. Both of those were questions that were asked by the task group, and we have increased that. The other significant change that we have made is with regards to what is facing the front. Spring Mill is right here, so now you'll, if you're on Spring Mill, you'll just see this retail center A, and you'll notice the front of all of the self-storage is now retail, office, and office. This is a specific use that was requested underneath the plan, and we've added that. So you now get the best of the both worlds when it comes to the use of this particular location. Most of the neighbors, Maple Knoll over here, specifically like the use of self-storage. It's safe, secure, it has low impact with regards to the amount of traffic that's back there. So the neighbors to the west, north, and south would have a limited amount of traffic that's going back there, but on the north and Spring Mill, or on the east and Spring Mill, we're still going to get the retail and office site that's specifically requested under the plan. There have been significant amenities that have been added since the last time we've spoken as well. Through this tree line you'll see here is now a bike path that's been included. You'll see in this location right here is new retail and office space that's been added specifically, and we now have a free meeting room, so that anybody that's in the neighborhood that wants to use that specific space has the right to use a meeting, the meeting room here, Cub Scout meetings, task force group meetings, anything that you'd have like that. And we've also added in this area here, sitting area next to what we hope to be an ice cream stand and things like that. So it's a nice sitting area, good connectivity for that particular location, and then we've also added a gazebo back here next to the pond. If there are any specific questions about the development that you'd like to have, I've got John Prine, the developers, between he and I, we should be able to answer those for you.
Thank you, Eric. Counselors, do you have any questions for the petitioner at this time? Hearing none.
I don't have any questions, but I will kind of elaborate on comments I made at Plan Commission last week, which I've also sent to each of you overnight, expressing my feelings that while this is a good development for what it is, the office use, the restaurant use, the components that are along Spring Mill are desirable for the Spring Mill Station area. I just feel very strongly that self-storage has just never been envisioned in that corner in that, while it's a significant area, it's not that large, and taking this much acreage out of the anticipated uses, I'm just not in favor of. I think we could do so much better in looking at it further and things I didn't communicate in my note to everybody. I find the signing along Spring Mill a little disappointing as well, and not that it's really specific to this development, but developing the middle parcel of this northwest corner, I think is going to create more challenges for us to getting a really desirable development on the north and the south. North in particular because of the drainage that runs through there. I just think this is nice and desirable, but wrong place, wrong time.
Thank you, Bob. Counselors?
I'd have to say I agree with Bob's assessment, and it has been a challenge for me. I serve on the task group. I do know that our task group did provide a recommendation to approve, but I continue to have concerns that the self-storage use does not meet the vision of what was intended for the area. And there are some PUD language issues that still trouble me, even though the petitioner was good enough to make changes. Lack of foundation plantings, the vagueness of what should remain in the buffer yards, things like that, so I still have concerns.
Do any of the counselors have any questions for the petitioner?
I would just, I would just comment as a member of the Spring Mill Station Task Group. Although storage was not anticipated or recommended as a plan, it was also not specifically excluded. I see it as this is something that the neighbors have felt will give them a very good transition and buffer, and I think that's one of the big reasons that the task group has recommended that this be approved. I also think that with the architectural changes they've made, this is not a typical storage unit. It has the two-story feature, which from the street, I think it will look good, and I think it will serve the neighborhoods well. There is a need for storage, and I think this is not going to be some regional draw. It's going to be mostly neighborhoods around this that use that. So it does serve, I believe, the needs of the neighbors, and that was kind of the intent of the Spring Mill Station, was to serve neighborhoods and not bring in any regional-type developments.
Anyone else? Joe?
There's not a filling station. With the PUD, could a filling station be in this grand sta?
We are willing to commit to no filling station, and there's not one intended in PUD.
I'd like to make a comment. I think from the very start, I was extremely against this. I just didn't feel the fit was right. So I kind of shared the concerns of Bob and Cindy a bit. Did watch it go through the process and was encouraged by the input. What I really did is as I went out and looked in other areas, not just our immediate area, but other areas of some various urban areas, and there were some unique locations for small storage sites, so that kind of changed my thinking a little bit. And I think the site, in this case, plays pretty well, and I think the architectural upgrades are really good, and considering the public input, the Spring Mill Station, the APC, I'm not going to tell you that I'm totally in favor of it, but at this time, I think it's probably acceptable. So those are my comments.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Any, I call for a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance seventeen dash nineteen, Spring Mill Grand Station, PUD District.
I have a motion by Steve Hoover. Is there a second?
I will second.
I have a second by Dr. Markeen. Any further discussion or comments by counsel? I too was a member of the Springfield, Spring Mill Task Force, as this went through, and Cindy, I shared the same concerns as Cindy and Steve at the beginning, and the petitioner worked very hard to address those and bring a new proposal that was similar in nature, but reduced storage space with better amenities, better parking, more things to attract local commerce, the neighborhoods, the connectivity of the trail to the outside, the landscaping, and other things that really kind of shield that from public view and exposes the need for, it gives us the opportunity for office space, some restaurants, and they made a change to the north, the northern edge there. The features with the gazebo, they're talking about the ice cream stand, and we wanted something that really was identifiable with that corner that popped. And I think with the clock tower fitting in with the Spring Mill Station vision, they've done an excellent job of reconfiguring this, listening to the neighbors, the Spring Mill Station Task Force, proving the parking and flow of the facility, and I think they've done a really good job of bringing this back. I know the use wasn't contemplated, but I think overall, they've bent over backwards to work with the station group, and we have to remember there's some property to the south of there that's not on the hard corner, across from the other commercial areas, and I think as that develops, it'll blend in nicely with this. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you, counsel. Next item under Old Business is seventeen dash twenty-five, Grassy Branch at Bridgewater. Caleb, you're presenting. This is up for adoption tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Caleb Ernest with the Economic and Community Development Department. This item is for the project called Grassy Branch at Bridgewater, formerly known as Oak Hollow at Bridgewater. The PUD will consist of sixty lots on Sunday, two and a half acres on the northwest corner of 151st and Carey Road. This project had a public hearing on the September 5th Plan Commission Meeting. The petitioner has updated the ordinance per staff's request pertaining to formatting of the PUD and concept plan modifications. This project received a unanimous favorable recommendation on the October 2nd Plan Commission Meeting. The proposal is eligible for council adoption tonight. John Davishewitz of Nelson &amp; Frankenberger is here representing the petitioner this evening, but has no presentation. Both he and I are available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Does counsel have any questions to the petitioner? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance seventeen.
Motion to approve ordinance seventeen twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think, Bob, you got the second on that one. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Up next, we have Resolution one twenty-seven, fiscal plan for annexation, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-seven, Chatham Hills Phase Twelve. Also associated with this is ordinance seventeen dash twenty-seven voluntary annexation. Pam will present both at the same time.
Yes, thank you again. Pam Howard of the Economic and Community Development Department. For you this evening, I have a one hundred percent voluntary annexation and an associated fiscal plan for approximately twelve acres to be part of the Chatham Hills development. It's generally located southwest of the US thirty-one and State Road thirty-eight interchange and is included in Section Four of the development, which is in the Plan Commission process now. This item received a public hearing in September and is available for your adoption this evening, and I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Pam Howard? Hearing none, we'll take one of these items each separately. So I'd like a motion to approve Resolution seventeen dash one twenty-seven.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Joe Edwards made the motion. Markeen seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, since this is a resolution, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor of Resolution seventeen one twenty-seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Ordinance seventeen twenty-seven, one hundred percent voluntary annexation, Chatham Hills Phase Twelve, is up for adoption as well. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by Joe Edwards.
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes.
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 Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinance seventeen dash thirty-two, Oak Manor PUD Amendment. Ms. Pam Howard presenting. We had councilor in September eleventh. This, too, is up for adoption consideration tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. For you this evening, I have an amendment to the Oak Manor Planted Unit Development District for the twelve point four acre site located on the south side of the Midland Trace Trail along both sides of Gunther Boulevard. On August twenty-eighth, that amendment was approved for the property to allow development of sixty-seven single-family detached and ten attached townhome structures containing forty-one units. The current amendment corrects an error in the minimum living area for the thirty-six-foot lots, as well as clarifies some of the language related to the minimum living areas. This did receive a favorable recommendation at the October second Plan Commission meeting, and I do have the petitioner, Brian Stumpf. He does not plan to present, but is available for questions, as am I, if you have any of staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance seventeen dash thirty-two, Oak Manor PUD Amendment.
Someone care to second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Steve Hoover. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes.
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 All right. Very good. Up next is ordinance seventeen dash thirty-four, under Old Business, the twenty eighteen budget. Mr. Todd Betroun.
Good evening, councilors. Tonight is that portion of the process that we undertake every year to present the operational budget, the debt, to you. So we presented this nearly thirty days ago, took public comment, and I'll touch on that a little further here in just a second, and tonight is the budget presented for your adoption consideration and ultimate adoption. There have been some changes, as you know, the budgeting process is a very fluid process, some of which is very anticipatory, as we will not get a certified budget until January, typically January of twenty eighteen. But with those changes, I'll invite Ms. Tammy Havard to the podium to point those things out since our last time that we've been before you.
Members of the council, there was one change to the twenty eighteen budget. There was no change in the budget column, but in the adopted tax levy and adopted tax rate, there was a decrease from what there was advertised in bond number three, and that was just us looking at the bond payments. The bond number three will be paid off in January of twenty eighteen, but you'll notice what you will be adopting tonight is less than what was advertised in those numbers. Does anyone have any questions on that? Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Todd.
Thank you, Tammy. During the public hearing, you heard comment from three citizens. We have been in contact via email with Mr., I believe his name's Thurston, answered his questions as it relates to specifically the event center, and it was clear in his inquiry that he was confusing the recent bond that you passed related to the construction of Grand Park to that of the debt structure for the event center. So we've explained that to him via email and are waiting in response, and invited him in for further discussion if he so chooses. I'm always careful to be respectful, this microphone and the authority that's been placed upon us, particularly the mayor's office presenting to you a budget, and we're very proud of this budget. It's been a lot of hard work since the month of May. Very careful of the comments of how far do we go down, and I know it's easy to get the microphone when you don't have the consciousness of how the operations actually work and stating that the budget is fat and things of that nature. You did receive by way of the clerk's office a battery of questions and inquiries. We've responded to those, and we will submit those to the clerk and for the public record. And one of two things is at play with that is clear that it's a gross misunderstanding of how municipal budgeting is created, and we have those explanations related to those inquiries here, and I'll give these to clerk, and she can circulate as needed. So with that, I will take your questions related to the budget and what we plan on using as we deliver services in twenty eighteen.
Todd, in your opinion, is when we get through the process, I know this is, we're just jumping in the water, more or less, and we'll go through the governmental scrutiny that has to go through. Do you feel like this is a balanced budget?
Yeah, it is. We are a hundred thousand dollars over at this point in time. Bear in mind, we underestimate revenues and overestimate expenses because of the very process that we have to undertake with the DLGF. We advertise a higher tax rate than what we anticipate receiving. You, that's just how the process works. There's very little of the tax rate that you actually directly control. You pass a CCD rate up to five cents, but oftentimes it is pared down by the DLGF. So we're within a hundred thousand dollars submitted, and again, we overestimate expenses, underestimate revenues.
In your opinion, where do you think the tax rate will end when all the whittling is done?
Currently, it's at roughly seventy-six cents a hundred. Now, what's going to impact that are the other taxing units and how the circuit breakers distributed through all the other taxing units, including the county, the school, the library, the solid waste. So my anticipation would be either flat or slightly higher than where we're at. There's not going to be a large jump in the tax rate. Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Counselor.
I'll probably couch this in some generalities first. You know, we could cut the tax rate by fifty percent, and it wouldn't affect the homeowner's tax bill at all because of the tax caps, and so a penny here, a penny there is not significant. But looking at debt and looking at the impact we have on other taxing entities, what I want to make sure that we're doing is anticipating three or four years out so that we have a good handle on when we can start rolling assessed value out from under the TIF district into the regular tax rate. Schools need it for Capital Projects Fund, which is their technology in building maintenance. We need it for operations. We have magnificent trails that we need to maintain.
Exactly right.
And I'm sure the other taxing entities also have those same operational needs. So I just want to get an idea about what do we envision going forward, because of schools, we all, a lot of us know, school debt is going to start rolling off to tax rolls at a rather rapid rate. I think it's thirty cents in twenty twenty and another seven or eight cents the next two or three years in a row. That's going to create tremendous under-the-cap flexibility for us. So I want to make sure that we're not causing other taxing entities to have to go out and make fiscal decisions based upon the fact that we're not anticipating needs and can adjust things as we're going forward. So I guess that's the thing. So the question becomes, when do we think that we'll be in a position where we can start reducing the amount of AV that's under a TIF control at this point in time?
Absolutely. Appreciate the question, counselor, not anticipating, but I do appreciate it. I think TIF is often scrutinized, some with good reason, throughout the state, and quite frankly, the country. But I will tell you that TIF in Indiana is one of the singular tools to use as an economic development, again, tool. So the question, when do we anticipate rolling that off? It certainly depends on how quickly our three percent base, two and three percent base were to grow. Right now, based upon the trajectory that we have, I think we've told you and shared with you before, twenty twenty-two, specific to the Grand Junction TIF, is already dedicated to the debt structure of Grand Park. But for Grand Park, we wouldn't have the economic development in the three percent, two percent base that we're realizing at this point in time. So we believe that the lines are going to cross. We've had our advisors at OW Crone and Associates continue to look at that. I will tell you that we look at that every year and how much increment that we could, if at all, release, and to your point, it does cause pressure on government units, but not the least of which is the city's operation. We cannot use, we do, pardon me, we do not use TIF. Quite frankly, it is against statute for operational purposes. And so there are other TIFs are just now beginning to see activity, Aurora being one of them, Eagle Town TIF is another one that we just cut the ribbon on, the ditch road extension adding to the public safety along thirty-two might add. So twenty twenty-two is going to be a monumental year for us and where we believe the lines will cross, particularly in our largest economic development area, and that is Grand Junction. So it's certainly, between John, Tammy, and I and the mayor, it's almost a weekly conversation, and not the least of which that our economic development department is included in as well, to try and get this, our commercial base, moving and activated.
Any other? Thank you, and I'm glad to hear that it's almost a weekly conversation.
It is.
It's very important. The other question I would have is, what is our bond rating and how does that compare to other municipalities?
So I can tell you that we're a double A plus at this point in time. How it compares to other units, I couldn't speak to that off the top of my head. I believe, John, maybe help me. Fisher's the...
Fisher's is got triple A.
Triple A. A lot of, what goes into that is our cash balance, our liquidity, our rainy day fund, our sustainability plan, the mere fact that we have one, and we're constantly updating that as a very dynamic document. It's not a static document. So we've worked really hard to be able to, at a double A plus, which, as you know, is our credit rating, just like in the personal world, the cost of money becomes cheaper for us at a double A plus.
Mark, let me also add, when you say, you know, the schools is having a lot of debt rolling off, they're also going to be adding a lot of debt per the last construction referendum that we just passed. So I've had several conversations, as late as last Friday, with Dr. Gray and her people on how this, the phasing in of this new debt will be coordinated with the old debt that falls off, and how we can lessen the impact overall of that increase coming up. So it's really a factor of phasing that new debt in, controlling costs there at the school, and then it's up to us, number three, to continue to add to that economic development pile of the three percent commercial, which we see happening in almost every one of our meetings here. But the real key is to continue to develop this commercial tax base that Grand Park is generating. If we didn't have this commercial tax base, we, I don't know where we'd be. That tax rate number that we have to advertise like that would probably be in three digits by now if we weren't able to create that commercial tax base.
To dovetail on that and then a follow-up point, the environment that we are in from an economic development condition necessitates us to bring an incentive package, packages to the table to incite the three percent development here. We are, as you can imagine, in, we're running in a league, so to speak, that has the ability with what seemingly is greater ease, and it's our peers in this county. So we're in that competitive realm that we've got to be very thoughtful in what we do put on the table, and I think the folks that are coming into this community tend to see that the vision and the strategy, and we're getting right across ten years as a city, and that's a significant milestone in where we were ten years ago to where we are at today, still, when you talk about the context of a tax rate, we're still, the municipal tax rate, the thing that we impact the most, is still lower than some of our peers in, quite frankly, in this county. The last thing, I know that many of you met with John and Tammy over our debt report. It's a quarterly report, is a draft, and we've tried to simplify the complex. John and Tammy have done a fantastic job, and I appreciate their efforts of breaking out each debt component. It is, again, another fluid document, and if you have questions related to that, you certainly know who summons us, but we're doing this as a matter of, as counsel Edward is keenly aware and quite aware, of our oversight, our control systems, and having that ability to report via Open Gov, that portal that you all are being introduced to. So with that, if there are any other questions, I'll yield and for your consideration.
Thank you, Todd. Any further questions for Todd?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a comment that even since the completion of thirty-one, the opportunities that we've seen come along, our focus has been particularly in the year seventeen to be very proactive in developing that three percent, and from that standpoint, we've been out there, and obviously, what's happened most recently are benefits of those efforts, so just want the public to know that, that we're not sitting here waiting. We're out there very actively promoting, so.
Thank you for this comment, Chuck. I entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve the budget, ordinance seventeen thirty-four, two thousand and eighteen budget.
Okay. I have a motion by Bob Horkey. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Joe Edwards. Any further discussion about the budget? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel, and as communication comes back from the DLGF, we'll be sure to pass that along, any substance of changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under Old Business is up for adoptions, ordinance 1735, salary ordinance, non-elected officials. Todd, are you presenting this? Sorry, calling you back.
Apologies. The salary ordinance, non-elected. This sets a minimum and maximum of each position for the city. Included in the budget is no more than a 2% raise across the board. And we've articulated in the budget presentation some of the staffing components that we anticipate to change. This allows directors throughout the year to make changes as they see fit if responsibilities were to be added or deleted and what have you. So again, it's a minimum and maximum threshold for each role within the city. Not all those positions are filled at this time, but this yet again is an annualized process that we have to present to you.
All right, thank you, Todd. Any questions for Todd?
I have a comment. Some of these changes this year are quite sizable, and without a salary study, I don't feel I can come back these numbers now. Some of them are small, but there's some sizable increases in there. And without the justification and a salary study, I would have trouble voting for that.
So as noted previously, I have two proposals that I'm vetting for such a study. That has never been done, to my knowledge, and I've been hanging around this place for about 22 years. And so I couldn't agree more. But I will tell you that some of the changes that you may see in there, Madam Counselor, we're in a competitive marketplace, there's some talented people, and the private sector is calling. And I can, I will not spend the time here in the public days to articulate some of the value add. I can tell you that we challenge those numbers internally, certainly respect the vote coming out of this body. But we will have a commissioned salary study, a comprehensive salary study with job descriptions associated. Just have to talk to the vendors and have a better understanding of what service delivery and outcome that we can expect.
If I may add to that, Mr. A, I can give you my own salary study, and it's very inexpensive and cheap, and I won't even charge you. And I can tell you, we are beginning to feel a lot of pressure from the private sector to keep our employees. And it's a factor of the unemployment rate. It's a factor of what some of our competing cities in Hamilton County are paying. And if you look at it, we're behind. And if we want to continue to provide a high-quality level of service, I don't even think this ordinance here allows us to go where we need to go. But it is something we're going to have to address very quickly.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments. I totally agree. I've seen some of the increases that are being offered around the state and other communities. And we value our workforce, and they work very hard for us, sometimes doubling up on assignments and doing well, well above the normal operations. And those people are targets for private industry. So I think this ordinance is a good step. I also agree that the salary study is a positive step in the future. So we are taking actions to verify what we've already seen in the marketplace.
Yeah, we want to have data-driven decisions, not anecdotal decisions, you know, based on anecdotal information. So once we engage the vendor, I would anticipate we would have their work product within 90 to 120 days after we've engaged them formally.
I would also say our employee count is about the same as it was back in 200, I forget the low, like 2014, 2011.
We've remained relatively static.
But so we're fairly flat, but we have done some outsourcing, which provides economies of scale in a lot of ways and saves us a huge amount of money. So I think you've managed personnel very, very well to this point.
To the credit of the directors.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 1735.
A motion from Arkeen, is there a second? Second from Steve Hoover. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The next two items, Mr. Zager will present, ordinance 17-36 and ordinance 17-30.
Can I interrupt you a second, Ms. Bullger? Could I ask you to explain that vote so I know what to tell my employees, please?
I just mentioned why. I just told Todd why.
What would you tell me?
I would like to see a salary study done. I've done, you know, it's not that I don't think that we need to pay our employees well.
Okay.
I think we offer a very good package. I think that, you know, there's always times that we do need to increase, obviously. But again, without a salary study, I don't feel comfortable making some of these big changes. That's all.
Okay, because I'll have to answer that question.
All right, thank you. All right, ordinance 1736 and 1737, Mr. Zager.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance 1736, which was introduced last month as a general obligation bond, which I previously discussed with a lot of you personally and all of you collectively, is an opportunity to replace our ongoing car leases with engaging in a general obligation bond. The second ordinance, 1737, is the additional appropriation, which will allow the council to spend that money. I received no questions regarding this since our last meeting, and I'm here to answer any if there are some today.
And just for clarification, this does not raise tax rates?
It's part of the 2% debt limit that municipality has. It's anticipated that this will be paid from the regular tax rate. It's not going to go on top of any tax rate. As I said, it's well within the 2% limit we have. The ordinance allows for a longer maturity rate, but our estimations is it'll probably be about five years before it's rolled off, and the interest rate on it is going to be in the neighborhood of about 2%, which is the main reason for going this way.
Any other questions for Mr. Zager? All right, we'll take each of these separate. So we'll address ordinance 17-36 first. This requires a...
This says, yeah, a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. This require, both these items require a public hearing tonight. And so if you wish to address either of these two, they're related, you may do so. I'll open the public hearing at 7:58. Would anybody care to comment on these two? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing at 7:59. Both of these are up for adoption consideration, so we'll start with the ordinance 1736.
Move to approve ordinance 1736, the 2017 GO bond.
Second.
Second by, I have a motion by Bob Horkey, second by Joe Edwards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. An ordinance 17-37, 2017 GO bond, additional appropriation. I'd entertain a motion for that as well.
So moved.
Okay.
You already stated it so eloquently, I won't repeat it.
All right.
Second.
Second, Joe Edwards. Okay, any further discussion on this item? All right.
Yes.
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 Very good. Thank you. The last item under Old Business is ordinance 17-38, and has to do with our ambulance fee structure and changes in, I believe, Medicare, what they allow us to bill. Are you presenting?
Sure, I'll do that. Amendment, ordinance 1738, which was introduced last month, is amending our previous ordinance of 15-39, which allows for us to charge for emergency medical transportation slash ambulances. In this case, we try to update our fees so they mirror what's allowed by the federal government through its Medicare Medicaid programs. This ordinance also will allow for those to be updated on January every year if the federal government does change those outlines. No public hearings requested, request that it be adopted tonight.
All right, thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 17-38.
I have a motion by Steve Hoover. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Bob Horkey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you, Counsel. Moving on to New Business. First item is Resolution 17128, Establishment of an Economic Revitalization Area.
Hello. Good evening, President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Amanda Rubideau with the Economic and Community Development Department. The resolution before you this evening is the first step in establishing an economic revitalization area in the North Point Aurora Planned Unit Development. The declaratory resolution, this declaratory resolution satisfies the Indiana statutory requirement. Should council adopt the resolution in front of you this evening, a conformatory resolution would appear for your consideration at your November 13th council meeting. If you have any questions of the department, I would be happy to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Salute.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Joe Edwards, a second by Chuck Lehman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll. Well, we can do a voice vote on this, it's a resolution, so let's do that. All those in favor, Resolution 17-128, Establishment of an Economic Revitalization Area, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Ordinance 17-40 is the next item under New Business, Park Street in the Junction. Dane Crabtree, welcome.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item is a request for a change of zoning at 231 Park Street, currently zoned general business to be known as the Park Street in the Junction 2 Planned Unit Development. Positioned within the Park Street corridor of the Grand Junction Addendum, the property is located on the south side of Park Street, two properties west of the Italian House. As depicted in the exhibits, the request is to change the current zoning to a PUD district in order to accommodate the adaptive reuse of the property, including a renovation of the interior of the existing building, as well as enhancements to the property's exterior that will include new landscaping and decking. The renovations are necessary to accommodate the relocation of Greek's Pizzeria due to the need for a larger kitchen space and a dining area that is able to cater more efficiently to large groups. With the exception of different setbacks to accommodate the existing primary structure on the lot, the proposed ordinance is identical to the existing Park Street in the Junction PUD, which includes the parcel on which the restaurant Chiba now operates. This ordinance is scheduled to be presented tomorrow, October 10th, at the Grand Junction Task Group prior to the scheduled public hearing at the November 6th Advisory Plan Commission meeting. With us this evening are Jesse Pullman from On Point Land Matters, property owners Bob and Michelle Beauchamp, as well as John and Julie Wright with Greek's Pizzeria. They do not plan to make a presentation, but are available for any questions you may have, and I'm available if there are any questions at the department. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dane. Are there any questions for the petitioners? Hearing none, I don't, oh, this is just an introduction. So we'll just move it on to APC then, thank you. Okay. Ordinance 17-41, Spring Mill Station, Southwest Corner, PUD, Pam Howard.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Again, Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, for an introduction, I have an amendment to the Spring Mill Station, Southwest Corner, PUD District. The original ordinance was adopted in 2015 and contains 20 acres on 161st Street, just west of Spring Mill Road, where a Rainbow Childcare is currently being constructed. This amendment incorporates an additional 20 acres directly to the east on that hard corner of 161st and Spring Mill, which was zoned the Depot Planned Unit Development District last year. The amendment ordinance combines the previous two ordinances and includes standards for both commercial and multifamily development. The current site plan does show a convenience store on the property. In preliminary discussions with the task group, the petitioner has agreed to remove that as a permitted use on the property. The petitioner will continue to work with the task group throughout this process. At this time, I have David George from CRG Residential, who would like to make a few brief comments, after which both he and I are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Members of the council, appreciate your time tonight. Just wanted to make a few brief comments since this project, two projects combining into one have been before you for the last couple of years, so I just wanted to explain a couple of things. We came in at CRG Residential in 2015, and we were approved. And then we worked with our partner on the east, which was Mark Zuckerman and the landowners, and he worked through a commercial project, and that was in 2016. Essentially, there were really two projects working side by side, and it made sense. We started negotiations then to combine and basically do one project. Since we're a developer, it made sense to bring the project forward because we can do the roads and utilities and things like that, and it can make a seamless transition between the two. What we're bringing before you essentially has a lot of the same things when we bring forward a final PUD. But we have, in the last number of months, worked with some of the commercial tenants, actual tenants. So when we come back before you, we'll have actual tenants that we can present. At the same time, on the residential side, we did hear some things when we were approved. One of those was mainly that our entrance was a little bit hidden behind the property at the hard edge. So we're working with this site plan to get a little bit more of an opening. At the same time, some things that you see here, one was a fire station. We have since learned that the fire department would like to be on Spring Mill Road, so we're working on some ways that we can do that. Again, that's pending council approval. And then also, as Pam mentioned, we did look at the possibility of a convenience store. We've heard from, we've heard, and we're not going to have that, so we're going to pull that back. We've been before the task force one time. We're going to be before them again Thursday, and we'll continue to be before them and work so that we can get a better plan with them and an approval before we go to the Plan Commission and come back to you. When we do come back to you, what I can say is that all of the elevations and everything that we had on the residential will be exactly the same. All of the elevations in the concept, elevations around the commercial piece, that's all the same. Every tenant that we're working with, we've shared that with them so that they can tell us if they can meet that or not, and nobody has said that they can't. So the main thing I wanted to share with you is, as we're updating the site plan a little bit with actual tenants, all the fit and finish and materials that you saw previously, that will be adhered to as well. That's about all I have, just out of the sake of time. But I just want to mention a couple of things is why we're coming forward with two site plans, or excuse me, two PUDs and combining those. We think we get a better product at the end, and we're ready to move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, David. This is the council introduction tonight. Does anybody have any questions for the petitioners? All right, we'll move it on to APC. Thank you. Next item, the last item under New Business, is ordinance 17-42, approving the issuance of Stormwater District Revenue Bonds. approving the issuance of Stormwater District Revenue Bonds. Mr. Zager.
Thank you, sir. As you know, or we'll find out, we have a Stormwater District that's comprised of two governing bodies. The primary one is the Board of Public Works, and of course, the council, because it has monetary impacts from time to time. This is the introduction and a public hearing for an ordinance whereby you would adopt what was already found earlier today by the Board of Public Works to be an appropriate bonding process to allow for some infrastructure throughout the city. Tonight is just an introduction for the council, and a public hearing has been duly advertised and needs to be held tonight. I can answer any questions before this comes back. But primarily, it's a revenue bond from the Stormwater fees that are paid.
Does anybody have any comments before I open the public hearing? I will open the public hearing at eight eleven. Do we have anybody that would like to comment on this item before us? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at eight twelve. This will be back before us for adoption October twenty-third. At this time, residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda may do so at the present time.
My name is Ray Schneider, I live at twenty-four fifty-five Whitney Road in Westfield. I want to comment to a comment that was made here this evening regarding the double-A-plus bond rating. The city put out a press release on December eighth, two thousand thirteen, where it said, "The city's bond rating has been increased to an AA-plus." Okay? And for two thousand thirteen, according to the DLGF, the city had ten bonds, which totaled sixty-six million dollars. And when the city has bonds rated, they have to pay a fee to S and P. The city got the AA-plus rating by only having one bond of the sixty-six million dollars rated. That was one point eight million dollars, and that bond is coming off the bond listing as of two thousand eighteen. So I have not seen the city have any bond ratings since two thousand thirteen. And one thing they didn't tell, they said they're gonna sell the utilities for ninety-one million dollars. They had forty-five or forty-six million dollars of debt, which was gonna leave forty-five million dollars of funds to be used over a ten- or fifteen-year period. Those funds are gone. And one other thing they didn't say, they didn't tell the S and P raider that they owed thirteen million dollars on the land of Grand Park. So I question the city's stating that they have a double-A-plus rating. Thank you, have a nice evening.
That's interesting. Thank you for your comments. I don't know where your information comes from. It costs money to have bonds rated. We have a good credit rating, so we can float those on the marketplace. We don't have to have them rated. There's, there's costs involved in doing so, and we can place those through private agencies. As far as the ten-to-fifteen-year spend, it was never contemplated. I don't know where you got those numbers, Ray. I'm sorry you felt that that was what, what it was, but that was never contemplated. We had needs in the city, and we took care of those needs and infrastructure, and we've improved our city tremendously. So I take exception to what you're saying here, and those are my comments. Would anybody else care to respond?
I would, I would concur that we, I mean, we never talked about ten-to-fifteen years. It was more the five-year timeframe is what we, I think, had been talking about from the beginning, spending those funds, and that's about where we're at, so.
My recollection as well.
All right. Any other guest comments at this time? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to council comments. Anything from APC, Mr. Hoover?
APC did meet last Monday evening, we had a rather full agenda. Briefly, we approved South Park Flex Building on South Park Drive, a development plan. The APC approved the Grassy Branch Marketplace Development Plan. Spring Mill Grand Station PUD, received a positive recommendation, we took further action on that this evening. Grassy Branch at Bridgewater PUD, received a positive recommendation. Grassy Branch at Bridgewater Site Plan and Development Plan was approved pending the approval of the PUD. Public hearing items were Chatham Hills Section Four Site Plan and Development Plan. The North Point, the old Aurora, PUD Amendment, had a public hearing. Oak Manor PUD Amendment, two for Lancaster, received a positive recommendation, we took further action on that this evening. And the last item was the Custom Commerce Park PUD Amendment, a public hearing was held on that.
Thank you, Steve. Any other council comments? All right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ake. Been a busy couple of weeks, I think, since we last met. The, had the Ninth Annual Grand Junction Derby last weekend, they had good weather, great turnout. Also, within the last couple of weeks, we cut the ribbon with, on the ditch road extension out on the far west, which will open that area to the west. It's building quite heavily, also opened some area for further commercial development right along thirty-two. And it eliminated a terrible intersection at Casey Road and thirty-two, which is, is now closed. Traffic uses the much wider ditch road, and I know I've had a lot of people ask, but that is, as far as a signal, that intersection is under control of the state, and they will be measuring that and taking some other safety issues involved. I know the schools would love to see a signal there because of the high amount of bus traffic, so they've assured us they'll be taking a look at that. We also had a great time holding grand opening for Methodist Sports Medicine Facility out of Grand Park. We had a, we had a band, and they had Colts cheerleaders, and Blue was there, because they are also the medical providers for the Colts. So our, our branding there with, with both the Colts and Methodist Sports will go very well hand-in-hand. But just to remind, the public Methodist facility is, is not just for sports. It is open to the public as a full-service physical therapy facility. It has x-ray machines, a physical therapist, chiropractor, right there on staff at all times. This Saturday, the second bulk trash day of the year, and they seem to get bigger and bigger. And it opens at eight o'clock and ends at noon. Check the city website for those items that can and cannot be, be taken there. I think our, I think it's paying off. I see a lot less bulk trash in our ditches, especially out in the rural areas, so I think that's paying off. And I, our trash pickup program, I think, is very effective. I won't mention any cities, but if you go to the south, you can see a marked difference on US thirty-one. I'm very proud of that, keeps right in with the green initiative that we've been talking about for quite some time. And this Wednesday night, right here at Simon Moon Park by City Service, six-thirty date, the first of several free fireside tails brought to you by our Parks Department. And lastly, please join us next Monday. We will have a major economic development announcement here in Westfield. Stay tuned for the time and location, but we're gonna be very, very pleased. We'll have some of the state government people here. And this is really a next step truly for Westfield. It's a, it is not sports-oriented, I might add. It is, it is a business that is coming here because of the quality of the city in attracting a workforce. So everything we're doing is playing just towards that. So join us next week, and we'll have more details out on when and where that is.
Thank you. Well, without any further business to conduct, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, a motion by Bob Horkey, second by Steve Hoover. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.